Have a sip of your coffee.
So, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Sioux Town Council, Monday, November the 20th, 2017, at 10:00 a.m. in council chambers. First, we have introduction of late items.
Yes, if we can add the email chain from Chris Bromage.
Yes, we would ask him to be added as a delegation and that he be allowed to speak at this meeting, okay?
With references to the town signage.
Yes, with references to the town signage, yeah. It doesn't say it on here, but we'll put that on. So, we need a secondor for that, to add this on. Thank you, Council Youngberg, that we added that we add this on. And we, so, could we vote on that?
Isn't it the N. Cameron?
No, it's the cow.
Is it this one here? We're talking more?
Yes. He is coming to this meeting, okay? All in favor? Thank you. Is there anything else that needs to be added on to the Committee of the Whole?
Yes, Mayor McCordough, if we could add just a report on a meeting regarding accessibility, and a meeting that Council Rhodes and I had with Mike Stiles, I'd like to discuss that.
All right, so that is two. We have a secondor for that, Council Rhodes. All in favor of adding that on to the agenda? So, we have two items now added on to the agenda. Mrs. Hilsen, is that okay? And we now need to, yes, we need to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor? Okay. One, two, all in favor? Thank you. And, so now we will go to delegations, and we have Kelly Glazer, the Executive Director of Destination Osoius, that is going, she's going to talk about the 2018 plan and budget. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, I'm sure you've all had a chance to review the document that we had sent previous. So, as usual, I won't spend too much time going through the basics of our vision and our mission. This year, what we did was we separated the marketing tactical plan and budget and the economic tactical plan and budget, so that you could see the differentiation between the two activities and what we were doing and how we were spending the money. So, I'll just carry on.
Mm-hmm.
Is that better?
Because it has to go on Granicus, that's why you have to speak into it, so that people can hear.
Granicus sounds like some kind of scary monster. Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
I think so.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so, we'll start with the marketing plan. And so, we've written down the indicators of success. I apologize for the continuing change in format that you see since I've arrived, but I fine-tune everything and listen to what people are saying about what they'd like to know more about and what they feel is important to add, and so that's why we continually keep tweaking it. Hopefully, we've found the right recipe, and it's a much easier document to review each six months that you receive it. So, I'll carry on then, and I may just, sorry, Brienne, I don't have page numbers, but I'm starting on the Primary Tourism Marketing Objectives page.
That one right there.
So, it's page five.
Thank you. And so, we're obviously looking to continue to grow marketing or grow tourism in Osoius directly to our competitive set. So, what that means is, is that in the last year, what we've done is we've set Destination Osoius up on what we call the STAR report. The STAR report is a competitive set international measuring tool within the hospitality and tourism industry. It's set up specifically for hotels in the beginning, and then there was a destination set up. So, basically, what happens is hotels will sign on to this program and submit monthly their average rate and their occupancy. As long as we have a minimum of six hotels in a community, we can then apply to have the destination measured. And so, it takes the information from those six hotels and measures it for the whole entire destination against other destinations. As the hotels in larger centers will pick their comp set, and the comp set is obviously the definition for competitive set. So, for instance, when I was in Victoria, working at the Delta, our comp set was only five different properties. We didn't take on the whole entire accommodation sector of Victoria. In Osoius, the comp set is everybody. And so, for Osoius, when we looked at the destination and how we would like to compare ourselves, we looked at other RMI communities, and we also looked at communities that were near to us that we felt, that our marketing committee felt, for instance, Kelowna. Our marketing committee felt that Kelowna was something they wanted to look and see what their performance was from a conference and meeting perspective. And so, Kelowna is in our comp set. So, measuring ourselves against our comp set is going to be a measure that we're going to continue to use on an ongoing basis. So, that's the STAR report, and that's something, as I say, we've implemented this year. So, we'll be looking for, you know, the indicators of success will be increased occupancy, increased room revenues, increased visits to the visitor center, which for us is going to be easy as heck. We're certainly learning that within our first week of not even being open at the new visitor center. Website traffic increase, social media interaction, we'll look for increases there. We'll also look for increase in our shoulder season, which is an important part of what we're doing. Increase in number of year-round accommodation package develops. What that means is we're looking to make sure that our accommodation offers are looking at all seasons as opposed to summer, which is not something that we actually have packages for as a rule. An increased percentage in package sales, so, you know, that means that we're putting together, we're helping bring together different businesses to work together to create those packages and do something a little bit of a different offer. Increase in U.S. and Canadian border crossings. We can get the information on the border crossings. Unfortunately, it does take a long time to get that information, but the efforts of Canada and British Columbia back into the U.S. market are being ramped up, and until those marketing efforts are increased significantly over a period of time, we won't be able to take advantage too much. We need to dovetail into what they do, and so, we will continually be watching at what they're doing and looking for ways to get involved in that market. And then, of course, our stakeholder satisfaction, which we'll accomplish by various number types of surveys that we'll put out there. And so, there isn't too much difference in our markets that we've identified as primary and secondary markets. You know, Vancouver and the lower mainland still is more than 70% of who our visitors tend to be in the summer months, and in our shoulder periods, we get a little bit of the entire Okanagan as more of a market segment that's important to us, so going as far north as Kamloops and further, and to Vancouver to some degree in the shoulder period. Our secondary market is Prairie Provinces. It becomes a secondary market simply because it is a shoulder season market. So, the Prairie Provinces are mostly impacting us in the snowbird area, even though we know full well that the Prairie Provinces do visit us in the summer months. We did notice that this summer, we think Alberta was a bit soft, and we noticed some of that ancillary spending be a bit softer as a result. So, occupancies and room rates were not necessarily down, but ice cream, you know, boat rentals, ice cream cones, retail purchases did seem to be down a bit. So, it was just that extra spend that we thought might be soft because of the economy in Alberta. Washington State will continue to work diligently at. It's a very tough market for us to seem to penetrate, and so, we'll continue to work on that again, partnering with the province and Canada. International, that's our long haul markets. Again, we have to work with Canada and the province on those ones. We have just become involved in something called CTAP, which is an Asia-Pacific market specific, to try and work with the Asian markets all in whole, not just China, and they're all very different from each other, and making our investment in time on the ones that make sense for our destination. In other words, we're not looking for a market that wants to come by, you know, busloads of 50 or 60 people, unless they really come in the winter, and some of them do. And, of course, working with Baldi on their concentration on that market. So, I'll just keep going. If there's any questions on any of these pages, it might be easier to ask at that time rather than go back, so I don't mind being interrupted.
Can I just ask you, you don't mention on here TOTA, but I know that you're working with TOTA as well?
Yeah, and when I say the province, that's, I kind of lumped TOTA in with that, because TOTA is an extension of Destination B.C. and their new format, so.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, and we do work with TOTA quite a lot. So, we also have identified the sectors that we think are important, and that, you know, what we think we need to do in order to attract those markets and develop and grow those markets. Of course, wine culinary and agritourism continues to be very important to us. Families continue to be very important to us, and we'll continue with that. And so, we look to increase activities in the social media with families more so than in some of the other market segments. Each market segment has its own requirement of how you speak to them, and the family market is definitely a social media market. So, we'll be stepping up our social media interaction in that area. Meetings, conferences, and special events is something we're also spending a little more time on than in previous years, and we've been investigating a number of different venues and trade shows, things like that, where we can start to get a feel for what is it that is being looked for and what is it that we need to do in order to cater to that market. Clearly, we cannot host large, large groups, but there's an increase on incentive travel with corporations in particular, and we're ideal for that market. So, that's where we're going to spend a fair bit of our time is on the incentive market, and our natural partner on that is going to be Area 27. So, we continue to work with them as they grow and develop what they're doing. Weddings will still be on our markets. We've been getting lots of feedback on the wedding market from our hotels, and they're basically telling us that they don't really need us to be out there at trade shows, but we do need to have a presence. So, again, this will be online through our website, and we'll also continue to highlight weddings in the way of the pre and post events around weddings, so the bachelor parties and the golf tournaments and those kinds of things. So, we're still involved in weddings, but we're going to pull back from trudging off to the trade shows and whatnot. Our wineries are not particularly interested in hosting weddings. Conversely, though, we are working with Tourism Penticton where we can, and they are very interested in wedding market, and we attended a wedding show with them this fall to share expenses, and what we found was is that it was a good match, because they're after something we're not, and we have a better product to deliver or offer when it comes to the pre and post events for weddings. And so, it was a good marriage and a good cost savings for both of us. Travel trade is something that lots of people have asked us about. The travel trade falls back into sort of the conversation I was having with you about CTAP. Group travel is something that you have to be very specific on where you're targeting for that business to come from, so that it's a good fit. You know, our rooms here are mostly suites. This is not an overnight stop. This is a two- or three-day stop, so we need to work with our operators on developing itineraries. FIT travel is also growing in its popularity as opposed to busloads of people, which fits us very well. You know, a van of 15 people is exactly what we need as opposed to a bus of 50 or 60. So, we'll continue to look into that. There's a lot of changes and shifts in the travel trade market right now. One of our largest Canadian RTOs, we call them, is a receptive tour operator, was just purchased by one of the largest Asian tour operators, and so, that is going to change the flavor of what goes on, I think. We're all wondering and waiting and watching to see how that goes.
Kelly, can I just ask, you said that you need vans that have, that hold about 15. I know there's a couple of the wine tour operators that have vans about that size. Can you work with them, or is that?
Well, no, because they're international travelers, so they'll land in Vancouver, and then they'll get in a van and they'll do their little tour.
Not just here, okay.
It'll just be a lot less people.
Thank you.
The snowbird marketing continues on. We've increased, and our marketing in the Prairie Provinces added a new, a few new print pieces, and we've also put a call to action for telephone as well as internet. We're finding that some of our more mature clients are not using the internet, and it's not easy, it's not helpful to them when they're told to go to a website sometimes. So, we thought we'd, you know, start re-promoting our 1-800 number. We've always had it, but we definitely thought that it would be helpful to just go directly to the website, but we're finding that's not necessarily the case. So, we're having a little bit more training on that one-on-one customer service for the snowbird marketing. We're also starting our marketing a little bit earlier, so that we can hopefully ignite longer stays, because there's definitely a full chunk of time during snowbird season, and we could expand that. Getting the snowbirds to be here at Christmas time is also something that we'd like to work on. We have a few ideas. We didn't put them in here, because we're not quite ready for that, but we'd like to investigate a couple of event-type things that we might do during the Christmas period. Continues on with snowbird and some of the initiatives. One of the things that Jackie, our Marketing Director, has been doing is talking to all of the parties involved in snowbird marketing and asking for a bit of cooperation in terms of, you know, a number of the hotels, they do their Alberta lunches or their, you know, different things, card games, things like that, but they don't share that information. So, unless you're staying at that place and you know somebody that's staying somewhere else, and you say, hey, you know, there's a card game. So, we're hoping to pull together an information site where everybody's going to dump that information, so that the snowbirds can go on one place and go, oh, they've got this or that going on at this or that place. It's better for the accommodators and the businesses that are hosting these things to have more people and move people around. And our snowbirds really look for that sense of community when they come here, so this helps them to continue to grow their social network while they're in Osoius. Festivals and events is something I've talked to you about before. We have found that there's a lot of people out there that have expectations of both the town and Destination Osoius on what we should be doing to help them promote their event, and we found that we need to have a program and guidelines for everybody to follow that made sense, and we also allocated money towards this. And so, much like our marketing co-op fund, we have now a festivals and events co-op fund, and we have two employees that are there to help the event coordinators get their way through the requirements that Destination Osoius will have in order for us to write a check to support that event. So, we have our events coordinator, Liz Drier, and then we have Jackie, our Marketing Director, who will help them, you know, understand what's required in terms of getting that money into their hands. History, arts, and culture, that is where we also include our First Nations product and what we'd like to do to help develop that. With the addition of Myra Baptiste up at the OIB, there's some really interesting conversations, and we continue to work through how we can work better with the OIB and their group of companies and really put forward a market-ready product, because we do get a lot of requests, in particular, from the Asian market, mostly about Spotted Lake, and we've had to turn a lot of business away this year, and so, we're really working hard to help the OIB get to a place where we don't have to turn that business away, but it's at a level that everybody's comfortable with. Outdoor adventure and ecotourism, this is where we put in our ski product, our golf product, water, all of those things that people come here naturally to do. So, we want to make sure that we are focusing on that particular interest as well in terms of our social media and our print media. So, what you have now is the budget for marketing, and definitely need losses for this. So, what you see is what we've allocated for this year, what we spent last year, and what, and because we're not finished 2017, what you're seeing is year-to-date actual forecast and what the variance might be on that. And so, we have budgeted $434,619 towards marketing initiatives for 2018, which is slightly ahead of 2017 based on our MRDT. I think that we are going to be very close to what we forecast. MRDT has been, in '26, right, we were running far ahead of forecast, and so, in 2017, we were a little bit more aggressive. Of course, you know, nobody needs to remind us of the fires and the smoke and how that impacted us as well as the floods. And so, we did see some variance in our June MRDT. We also saw some variance in our August. So, basically, we were ahead in July as per usual, but we were behind in August by $10,000. So, that's quite a bit for us to reorganize. In June, we were down about $3,000 or $4,000. These are our months that we really count on, and so, even though $3,000 or $4,000 doesn't sound like very much, it is. And so, we were only ahead in July by, I believe, might have been just under $20,000, so that'll probably balance us out for the remainder of the year. I was surprised to see August down. I think August was, that smoke really didn't help us. So, that's the end of the tourism and destination marketing plan, as it were, as obviously there's a lot more detail in the writing that you've been given. Is there any questions on that before I move into economic development?
And can I just remind you, and it's, and you can take as long as you like to give us this information, we have a couple of other delegations that are here, too.
I won't take too long.
So, we need, we need to be a little bit quicker with it. Thank you very much.
All right, so, based on those comments, what I'll do is I'll just review the key indicators of success and highlight them.
Okay.
So, obviously, we're looking to increase new businesses. We saw 27 year-to-date, so we're not getting too aggressive, crazy. We're looking for another 30 in 2018. We're looking to increase stakeholder satisfaction. Again, that'll be through a survey. Information requests, relocation information requests, we'll be looking to increase those through our website and our improved website. And increase our web traffic as well. A lot of what we're doing for economic development is web-based, and so, a lot of our measurements will be web-based. We've added film to our target activities for economic development, and we're working very closely with South Okanagan Film Commission. And we've also added, well, we continue with the airport expansion and working with the Airport Society in projects there. I think that, again, we've changed things up a little bit, so you'll see that the strategies that laid out and the tactics behind those strategies, we have five strategies that we're focusing on and the tactics that go with them. And then, of course, I'll just get right to the budget, and then, if there's questions that I've skipped over, then you can certainly ask them. So, the economic development budget, the only thing I'd like to draw your attention to that is different is that we're carrying over from the 2017 year, $15,000. We had hoped to engage in a bigger way with the airport, and due to a number of issues, that didn't happen. And so, we're carrying that money over, so that gives us a little bit more to work with in 2018 and just get a little bit more detailed in some of the things we're going to do. So, we've added a number of line items to the budget. In this budget, you'll notice that we've put numbers beside each one of those line items, and there's a supporting document that shares, well, actually, sorry, in those line items, in, within the description, it shows where that money will come from for what strategic initiatives. The last page is the notes to the budget, and I wasn't quite sure if you had received the notes to the main budget, but if you didn't, then I certainly have the notes that I can answer any questions on, the variances and whatnot.
Thanks. We didn't get that, but that's all right, yeah.
Okay, so, I do have it ready here if there's any questions.
Okay.
So, no questions? Everybody's happy?
Counselor Campbell.
Not so much a question, as a comment. Having been part of DO for many years and in different capacities, I experienced a lot of false starts, reidentifications of what the organization was and was to do, and all sorts of different approaches. Having had you come and speak to us a few times now and seeing this, I just want to say I'm feeling a lot better about the direction of the organization. There seems to be a clear focus and path forward. So, no, kudos, and, yeah, it's refreshing.
Well, thank you very much, very much appreciated.
Thank you. Counselor King, are you, you're on the DO board, you're okay with the, you understand this better than the rest of us, probably.
Yeah, actually, we've met a couple of times and reviewed this intensely, and I gotta say the concurs that Counselor Campbell said that I believe now it's definitely going in a better direction. It breaks out more what activities they're doing and attaches, attached to that money, so you can really see now in-house whether they're on task. So, yes.
Well, thank you very much, Kelly. I know that you're probably busy trying to get packed up and.
Done already.
No, you're moved?
We're moved. My desk looks amazing. All I need is for a phone to ring and an internet to, some emails to come through.
So, you've already moved. I thought you were talking at the beginning of the meeting about your own house that you were moving.
I did that, too.
I didn't realize that was.
If you can believe it, like, there's nothing wrong with me. I did both moves, one last month and one this month.
Wow.
Yeah, no, we're all set to go. We're open today, moving forward, and we're pretty excited. Our space is amazing, and we're working with the Desert Sun Counseling people to help try and get them in a bit early, because they're in a position where they need a place, and so, yeah, it's all good. We're happy.
Okay.
Happy, happy.
Go ahead, Counselor Youngberg.
Comments, Kelly. Just great to see you, and I certainly agree with Counselor Campbell. You're just a breath of fresh air for that organization, and it's going ahead in such great, right directions, I think. Also, thank you very much for all the time, and I'm so glad to see you're at that new location.
Yeah, thank you so much. Really appreciate your comments.
Well, thank you for coming, and please know that we welcome you back anytime to give us updates on whatever is necessary, okay?
I will. All right. Well, thanks again.
Thank you. Um, next on our agenda, we have Sergeant Beta, um, who's going to come up and discuss the RCMP Quarterly Report and you brought some other people with you.
Yes.
Okay. You're gonna introduce them?
I'm gonna come up with me.
Okay. Thanks each other. Absolutely.
You just got evicted officially.
Be careful with that one.
So will you make sure your microphone's on because you'll need to speak into that? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So first of all, thanks for having us here. Want to introduce two new members to our detachment.
Good.
Um, first of all, Corporal Brent Greenfield, who's transferred in from Specialized Section down in the Lower Mainland. I had the privilege working with Brent in Litten before my time here, so I know what I'm getting in a member. And, uh, well, I know what he was like back then, so as long as he continues on in those ways and, uh, then we're getting a good member.
Well, welcome.
Um, secondly, Corporal Dave Smith from Penticton, resident of Oliver, so lives, lives close here, is, uh, been named to be the Corporal, so he's here.
Good.
So we're just waiting for Dave's arrival, which we're not really sure when that's gonna be, but, uh, it's, we're thinking fairly soon.
Well, he's here today, so that makes a difference.
He's here today, yes. Um, we're hoping, well, we hoped it would, would've been by now. Um, we're just, they're working out some kinks with, uh, his, uh, replacement in Penticton, making sure that they're not leaving them avoid there and, uh...
So how many members do you have in, in Osuus now?
Well, I'll go through that. I'll go through that in the...
That's our big thing you get asked about all the time.
I'll go through that in the closed one.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
So, you all have a copy of the, or, or do you have a copy of the report? Perfect. Excellent. Okay. I'm gonna talk about that briefly and then I'm gonna talk about a little project that I would like to possibly do in town. So, have you all had time to go through the Quarterly Report? Any questions on any specific areas that you want me to address right off the hop there?
The concern is, and I know that, um, Superintendent Deager said this too, when he comes to our DOS meetings, that it can be kind of scary-looking, this graph, and so when you've got one or two and then it increases by fifty percent, all of a sudden it looks like you're going off the charts and you're...
Right.
And we understand that. So we have to look at this graph carefully...
Right.
...when we, when we read it.
So when I look at, when I look at the graph, I try and compare it regionally to see how we're doing in the, in the overall area. So, we'll, we'll go down it one by one. So when I look at auto thefts, we're at minus nine percent, um, versus the overall areas is a plus nineteen percent. So, so in other words, we're doing better on auto thefts than, than we were, um, the third quarter last year by, by three, by three less stolen vehicles. So it's not really significant, but we are doing better there. We're doing quite a bit better in, uh, break-in and enter businesses. So, um, commercial break-in enters, that's gone down significantly compared to, um, the same time last year. Where we start going up is, uh, break-in and enter others, that'd be like sheds and other outbuildings. Um, and then significantly in, uh, break-in and enters residential, so residential homes, which has gone up seventy-five percent. Seventy-five percent, and that's one of those areas that sounds like a huge number, but I'll, but really we've had six more break-in and enters to residences, uh, this year over last year.
And does that include car thefts as well? Because, you know, you see that...
So auto thefts was the first one.
Oh, that, okay.
So that's the one that we're down on.
Does that also include machinery too and, and C-dos and that kind of thing? Or is it just cars?
Well, that, it depends. That'll either be, um, theft, uh, break-in and enter other, if it's, if it was in a shed or in a property. If it's, if it's, uh, on a road or in a driveway, it would just, it'll be, uh, just considered a theft of a vehicle.
Okay. Okay. Cause that's a bit confusing and of course on Facebook, anybody who has a theft of any kind puts pictures and everybody responds, so you get a lot of media hype.
And you do more so in a small town like this?
Yes.
Because everyone knows everyone and, and if your friend has been affected, or someone's been affected, everyone knows that person, so they all feel they've been affected compared to a, a bigger city.
Right.
Um, I, I tend to go onto the news quite a bit to look at other areas, um, different Facebook chats from other communities and I can say we're no different than any other community right now. Um, I was just on one from Porta Murnee the other day and the locals there taught, you know, saying what do we need to do, um, as a community to stop the crime or to stop theft because they say it's increasing. That's their perception in their town, because it's a small town. Same perception we're having here or Grand Forks we have or Caramias and... So, we're no different, um, than any other community right now, um, but we are seeing an increase in crime. My belief on that is that, uh, the drugs that are on the streets now are getting stronger and more addictive and the people we're arresting, um, so far, all of the people we've been arresting for these break-in and enters residences and businesses have been addicted to methamphetamines. So, it's a, unfortunately, it's a vicious cycle. The, the numbers, when you look at break-in and enter residences, um, like I said, it got up six over the last year. The majority of those can be attributed to, to one event as well.
Right.
And, uh, we had a significant number of houses hit up at the golf course in one night and that was, uh, the person responsible for that was arrested in West Kelowna. So it wasn't the local, but travel boundary to commit some crime. So when you get, when you get one day of, you know, one day crime spree, that'll change our numbers drastically. Uh, theft on vehicles, uh, went up. That was, uh, I believe the same crime spree. We had the beanies, the residents and the vehicles all done at the same time. So what this person was doing was breaking into a car, taking out the garage door openers and then entering the, the home with a garage door opener. So we recommend to people that, you know, garage door openers are a convenience, but it's, uh, it's also a huge convenience to, uh, to someone wanting to get into your home. So, so we recommend keep, keeping them out of the vehicle. We go down the board, uh, we look at, uh, violent crime, domestic violence, we've had two more than we had last year. And, uh, then we've had a bit of a bump in violent crime against persons. Violent crime against persons could be any report of an assault. It could be someone touched someone the wrong way and, and they're offended and it's assault. So it doesn't really reflect, I don't want it to look like we have a violent community because we haven't really had a violent, any violent assaults in this community. So, nothing, nothing that's, you know, anyone would need to worry about, so...
Okay.
And then property crime is your, is your usual property crime, someone taking something off your porch or, um, could be simple mischiefs, damaging someone's fence, things like that, so... So, across the board, it's, it's somewhat, somewhat gone up, um, again, except for the break-in and enter businesses and the auto thefts. But you look at somewhere like Oliver, their auto thefts have gone up seventy-five percent, yet ours have gone down. The, the people that we've been catching, we've got about six in the last three weeks. And every time we catch someone, we think that it's gonna end, we think we finally have the person. We know now of one other person who's been extremely active and, uh, we got into a short chase with that person recently and they, so they know we're, we're looking for them. Um, they're a non-Osuus resident, so they don't live here, but, but they've been committing crime throughout the whole South Okanagan, Grand Forks, all the way through to Princeton. Um, we believe that this person's been our most active player and so we've had our target enforcement unit from Penticton down here, tried to look for that person and we'll hopefully have them in custody in short order.
Good.
Um, when I, again, when I look at, um, Oliver's theft vehicles versus ours, it doesn't mean that we have less crime here, it just means that, that these people are traveling around and it's not uncommon for someone to steal a vehicle in one jurisdiction, head to another jurisdiction and, and do their break-in and enters and then return. So, we're, it's a problem with small communities being so close together, we're, we're gonna have those criminals travel throughout our communities, unfortunately, so... We, um, with our arrests, what the, one of the fellows that we got, uh, we got him active doing some, some theft on vehicles on Lake Shore Drive. Uh, we also had him on video doing a break-in and enter to a residence in town. He had just returned to Osuus after being away for some time and unfortunately he's addicted to meth and, and got busy right away. He's been in jail since we arrested him. I don't know how long we're gonna be able to hold him, but, um, but at least he's there. We, uh, put another fellow in jail recently. He, we did a search warrant up at a house on Alden Road up near Mount Baldy and primarily what we found out of that residence was property from the Grand Forks area.
Okay.
Um, although that, that person was living in our area, the majority of the crime was committed elsewhere. But we still have, we did get that person put in jail and we're hoping they'll, we're asking for some significant time, but we're still working with Crown on that one. So, any questions?
Corps, oh, sorry, Councilor King, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you feel the influx of people here the past three months has a correlation with the numbers going up or nothing to do with it?
Um, I didn't realize there was that much of an influx of people here in the last three months.
Well, the summer, the town seems to...
Oh, you mean the summer, you mean in the influx in summer? Um, well, there's always a, there's always an increase of, of calls for service and crime in the summertime because of the, the amount of people we get here, um, and that's gonna continue. Um, it's the same as a place like Whistler, um, or any other resort or destination type community. You get a lot of people that come to your town and they don't, uh, they don't have that same ownership feeling of that town and will maybe do things here that they wouldn't do in other communities or their own communities. Um, the, the money that council has given to us for the extra policing has certainly helped over the years. We've had two years, uh, it was two thousand and fifteen when we had the fires here and then this last summer where we had the fires show the province that really hampered us from using the funds and getting them. We just couldn't get the members, the members in the RCMP. Every detachment was mandated because it was state of emergency to supply members to the fires and we, we did supply people, uh, but not as much as other detachments did. We, reason, reason we didn't is because we were already short members.
Sure.
Um, but it, it didn't enable me to bring as many members in as we wanted to, to do the seasonal policing. So, unfortunately, those things are gonna come up and, uh, but when we're able to use the money, um, I think it makes hu, a huge difference in the amount of crime in the town, so...
Sure. Okay. Councilor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Corde. I have two questions. Uh, first one is, when we talk about, um, what the Crown, what, I guess what the RCMP asks the Crown as far as, uh, time and things like that, are we seeing a lot of these crimes as repeat crimes where people are taking, are being incarcerated for short periods of time, coming out and recommitting?
Yes. Yeah. So, right now, um, it's not really fair for me to talk about Crown or the courts without them here to explain their sides. But we, um, my, my job is to advocate for my members that are, are working hard on the street and putting people in custody. My job is to, to help secure a charge when Crown doesn't feel that there's enough there. Um, we've had a lot of cases where we've had what we feel is a very solid, a solid arrest or solid, you know, a lot of evidence to the crime and Crown is so, uh, bogged down with the, and lacking in resources themselves, that they're only taking the, the most extreme solid cases. So we may have what we feel is, is a very good case and they'll toss it right away. So now it's my job to, to fight, to get them to relook at that and lay a charge because those people are just coming right back into their community. Um, so I've had, I've had to do that on a few and, and fortunately, um, by really sticking up for what we believe in and, uh, that the public would want us to do, we've been able to secure charges that originally we hadn't, so...
So I'm gonna ask that question because I, I kinda knew that was the answer, but I think it's important too when we, you know, when people are talking out there about increases in crimes, um, not enough happening to decrease crimes, I think it's important to understand that there's more moving pieces than just getting an arrest, uh, as far as, as bringing these numbers down.
Yeah.
My second question was around the Mental Health Act. I'm wondering how much time is spent dealing with, um, youth or adults with mental health issues where there's no criminal activity but no other resources available as far as dealing with episodes or things of that nature?
It's, it's significant. The issue, the issue with us in a small community and not having a hospital here or, or a psychiatric doctor here or psychiatric ward, is that when we deal with someone for a non-criminal matter, but, but a mental health matter, someone still needs help. Um, but in, in these cases, some of these people, um, will act out violently, not because they want to, but just because they can't help it. Um, we get involved because ambulance can't transport a violent patient. So we'll get involved and we, it's a two-step process. We have to take him to Oliver Hospital, where there's still not a psychiatric, um, doctor. But we take them for a quick assessment where that doctor basically determines whether he agrees, or she agrees with our determination that this person needs to see a psych doctor. And if they agree, then we transport up to Penticton and we often end up waiting in the hospital for a certain time with that patient, keeping them secure until they see a doctor and are, are either admitted or released. Um, in many cases, these people are released before we feel that they've got a proper assessment.
Right.
Um, we just dealt with one last week where we took the person up to Penticton and the person was sued. Was mentioning to people, texting that, uh, they want to commit suicide, talked to us, went out, like I went out there and talked to him, uh, he was clear to me that, uh, as life as he knows it, he felt was over and wanted, he wanted to end his life. So we had him transported up to the hospital in Penticton and he, remember, well, Brent was one of the ones that took the person up there and the doctor suddenly released that person back into our custody to drive them back, back home. When we got home, you know, brought them home, he ended up telling us that he had taken a number of pills and before we took him up there and, well, he didn't tell the doctor that. And we're not, he didn't tell us that and we're not necessarily privy to the information that, you know, you know, the privileged information between a doctor and a client. And, and so there, these people are getting, they're, they're being taken there for a reason and they're just being released right away. Well, now we're, now there's more resources being tied up because now I have to send an officer to that house again to deal with that person. So it is, uh, it is something that on a, on a regional level at Penticton with our superintendent, um, he is, uh, he's passionate about that and, and trying to fix that system. And, and part of it is, is making sure that they have a secure room and a secure bed available for when we wanna bring someone up. So when we take someone up, instead of us standing there as a security for three hours, four hours, waiting for a doctor to see him, they have staff in place, you know, and a secure room where that person could be brought into and, and not hurt themselves, so... Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Rhodes?
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to, uh, ask a, a question and maybe a comment about perception in our community and as a counselor, we often get to talk to residents about crime in our community and that kind of thing and I often get the, the comment that, uh, when you have crime, so if you have fifty crimes, there's always a perception that you have fifty different criminals committing fifty different crimes in our community, so that when you're walking down Main Street, there's a good chance that the person beside you is gonna break into your house that night. And I know I'm embellishing it a little bit, but the perception...
The fact is, is usually it's fifty crimes committed by three or four people. And I'm wondering if somewhere in your statistics that you could maybe convey that message to the public that, you know, uh, there's crime, yes, but it's a very, very small condensed group of people and like you say, normally people that are involved in drug or the, drugs or the drug trade and that kind of thing. And, you know, it, it makes people feel better when you hear those kinds of things and they often don't. I'm just wondering if you could maybe comment on that or whether it's a worthwhile endeavor? It's all about the statistics, you know? I know they're factual and they, but people just, you know, they look at them and lots of times they, they get, you know, anxiety and fear from looking at the statistics when sometimes the opposite might be true.
Right. And, and I think that's a key word is factual. Is it, they are factual, but when we wanna start pulling more out of it, that we don't have... Is it, are factual, but when we wanna start pulling more out of it that we don't have or bringing other numbers, then, then it becomes where it's not factual. So what I mean by that is, just throw it around in a number, if we had 20 break-in enters listed on here, those are 20 break-in enters that are reported to us. If five of those are solved and we know that it was two different parties committing those, then we can say that, you know, three are done by this person, two are done by this person, but we still don't know about the other 15. So there's still, there's still that percent, like we can't say, we know that these people did the other 15 or how many more did. So it's very, it's a very, that's a very difficult stat to really narrow down because you have so much crime that goes unsolved. About, when we talk about the solved crimes, I'm sure we can get the stats from that, from our analysts, to determine out of this many break-in enters solved, break-in enters are solved, theft of vehicles, this is how many people have been involved. You know, we should be able to get something like that.
Yeah, those would be valuable pieces of information for, for the public.
Yeah.
There's no doubt.
So prolific offenders, that, and you have mentioned that before. You've said that a couple of times that I've heard that, you know, one person or two people or a group or something have been discovered or put in jail and all of a sudden the crime goes way down.
Right.
So I think that's what people, they kinda like to know that sometimes, that if there is somebody or a group, 'cause I think it was four of them here last year or something, that you managed to catch. That makes, certainly makes people feel better that they, that they know that this is being dealt with and that they're not, four or five of them still out there.
Yeah. And we can do a better job on our, on our media side of it too, when we do arrests and we're, we're trying to change, normally I would put out all, all the media stuff locally, but because of a lot of the, the, because we're a federal agency, we have to follow Canadian laws in, in putting things out bilingual. So if I do, if something's gonna extend beyond our community, so I'm gonna have something go as far as Kelowna or otherwise, a larger, a larger audience is gonna see it, I have to make sure that that release is put out in French as well.
Okay.
I can't speak French and I, and if I was to try and write something in French.
We wouldn't be able to understand it. No.
So the way, the way we're, we're starting to do it province-wide is, is really rely more on our regional media persons. So Corporal Dan Moskowak who does our media for the Southeast District. My job would, would, it's, and it makes it easier on me because it's less work for me. I just send it out to, to Dan.
And he does.
Dan uploads it to, to the Soyuz RCMP website. And then if people want further information, they can then come to me.
Good.
But that way we can have it on, we can have a link to the, the French version or the English version. The issue with that is when you're relying on one person to upload it, it doesn't always get done because that person could be extremely busy.
Sure.
If there's a region, if there's something big going on like we had in Salmon Arm with the, with the farm up there in large search, Corporal Moskowak was extremely busy with that. And so some of our stuff that we sent up didn't get put on. So we've gotta do a better job of getting that out to the, out to the public and that's something that I'll be pushing for, so.
Good. Okay. Well, we thank you very much for providing this report to us and, and we appreciate having these updates, certainly from you and from Superintendent Deager as well. And I think it's important for us to see the trends and compare and, so thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. You can stay right there while we go on to the next, or you?
Can I get one, one open meeting thing?
Absolutely.
I just wanna pass this out to, to, pass these along. See, really, really quick. So a lot of you may have seen these things before in other communities. It's a little station for borrowing a life jacket or a life jacket owner station.
Oh.
So these are, the first time I saw one of these was up in Kelowna at the, at the Marina. And it made me think about our community right away with the, with the best we've had on our lake and a couple of them without, with, due to the persons not having life jackets.
Just a sobriety test?
No, no, no.
That's the last one, yeah.
It's, it's, I took these off Google. It's the best I could do, to give you an idea. So my thought is, is I would like to build one of these at our Marina Town here. So people launching a boat, or taking their kids out there, anyone else that's missing a life jacket can grab one, go for the day and then return it. The US Border Patrol has built one on their side and put it in memory of the young 12-year-old girl that passed away on Haynes Point.
Okay.
And I would like to build one here and put it in memory of the young man that drowned on the seadoo who wasn't born in a life jacket a couple of years back.
Weird idea.
In order to do that, obviously I'd need permission from the town of an area at the Marina that we can build it.
So absolutely, you need to talk to Mr. Remanko and he will set that up. Also, my concern is, it's like baby seats. The Seruoptimus had baby seats that we used to rent out. Well, because they didn't, you know, they were old or they were damaged or something, we literally had to take a chainsaw to them and cut them up before we took them to the landfill because we didn't want somebody picking them up and using them and then, so liability issues would have to be in, I, I would think considered in this as well.
Yeah, and we can look at the other, what other cities and towns are doing.
Sure, absolutely.
They're becoming pretty prevalent at, at boat ramps in other communities.
Okay.
So I'm sure other people or other communities have come across liability issues and got through. And I do have an offer from US Border Patrol Explorers. There's, so they're like their, they're like their Cub Scouts system down there. Young males and females who aspire to, to join law enforcement when they're older. There are a lot of volunteer community, community in, or community work in their community. They volunteered to come up and help build ours.
Good.
So I thought that'd be neat to have, you know, some, use some Orville even come up and.
Be some people here too, so, yeah, good.
So.
Well, thank you very much. That's great. Please, yeah, Mr. Remanko will certainly help you with that.
Once we figure out liability and if we can get permission to put it on town land at Marina there, then, then I can start rolling with it and looking for donations for, you know, from local businesses for the funding for the wood and, and things like that, so.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, thank you for, for your report and we will, and you're gonna stick around because...
Yeah, stick around for the closing.
Okay, so next on our agenda is Mr. Bromwich, who would, had asked that he be added as a delegation and be allowed to speak on a town signage issue. Mr. Bromwich, would you like to come up to the microphone, please?
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks very much, Mayor and Counsel for taking my late addition. I think you all have copies of the email that I forwarded to Counselor Campore regarding the, the town signs. As I understand it, a tender was put out. I'm not quite sure when the tender went out. We weren't included on the distribution or, or notice of that. My basic, I guess, question to Counsel is, we had approached the town last year, offered to rework the signs at the town entrance. We were told at that time that there was no budget available. So we offered to do all the work in 2016 and bill in 2017. We were told at that point that there was no guarantee that there'd be a budget in 2017, but that we would be kept in the loop. We weren't kept in the loop. The quote that we'd given to Counsel was just under $18,000 to replace all of the signs. We even went so far, I dug back through everything, we went so far as to do design work on this as well. So it came as a bit of a shock to find that of the seven companies that did bid under tender, one was from Kelowna, three from the lower mainland, three from the island, the cheapest price offered was $54,000 and something and the most expensive one was $220,000. So I guess my, I guess my question is, tender process is a, is a great process. It should work fairly on behalf of the taxpayer to get the best price, but clearly in, on this occasion, it didn't work. Further, I really don't understand the town's system. And if I can go back to the building of the fire hall last year, I spent close to 14 months chasing that contract. First through Grayback Consulting, then it came back to, I was told by Grayback that council were gonna, the town was gonna decide who got the contract. I'm not sure whether that ever went out to tender. We ended up getting the contract, but it was, I can tell you that in terms of hours spent, it wasn't worth doing. Finally, if I can say, I don't know what the, what the criteria is for deciding on these specific projects, but we are a business based in the Soyuz. We pay taxes here. We only employ local people. And when we, when we buy product, 95% of the time, we buy locally. If we have to do any extra work, for example, use an electrician, we would only use a local person. And yet, we weren't included in this tender opportunity. Now, I, I'm sure that the response to that may be, well, you should have seen the, the tender opportunity. As I said in my email, we were already having a conversation. Nobody got back to us. So I'd just like Counsel to reflect on that. And, and in the end, the key point here is, if there were three sign companies in town, all three sign companies should know about this, this process. Because in the end, this money is from the taxpayer. It's not from council.
Thank you very much. We do know that the, that we, we definitely try to use local businesses whenever possible. All of us shop locally whenever possible. The request for proposals for a totally different design, plus all of the, the things that went with it, taking out the old ones, not refurbishing, but starting from fresh with a, a fresh look to it, was put in the Soyuz Times on October the 11th and October the 18th. So we have copies of that for sure.
Right.
And it was also put on BC Bid. And that is, I would assume, a place that people would look for new projects that are there. So I, I do think we followed, from my point of view, we did follow the correct procedure for the Local Government Act and the Community Charter. We did that properly. It's, we certainly do not have the ability to go around to specific businesses and say, why don't you put in a bid for this? Because we do it openly to allow everybody to bid on this. So I think we've done this correctly. I, I certainly respect your opinion on the fact that you, you would like us to deal with things that are local and we do, as, as much as we possibly can. But we can't go out and tell people, please bid because this is something coming up. We have to do this legally. And I'm going to ask Ms. Van Veenen or Mr. Remanko to, to comment on the procedure here. Thank you.
Well, actually, there's two procedures being, that I'll speak to. One is in terms of this particular signage program, again, just confirming what the mayor was saying, is this, this was not a refurbishing process. This was a, a fresh new look at, at the proposal. And according to our purchasing policies, we followed everything in our purchasing policy. And even if there is a, a local situation, when, once you get over, our purchasing policies have threshold numbers that we have to get second bids and, again, we're following our purchasing policies. The, the second, in, in terms of speaking to the fire hall project, I, I don't know specifically what signage is. I guess the interior signage is.
Correct.
We had nothing to do with that. That, that was all, that was part of the tender, building tender. Grayback goes out, finds, solicits bids, how they, how they solicit bids. And no, council didn't have anything to do with that. Staff didn't have anything to do with that. All, what happened is, it was a part of it, overall tender project.
Okay.
Certainly, you know, the Soyuz signs is a, is a good business in town that we use faithfully. And again, your comment relative to, you know, could be said that, you know, we did advertise, it's transparent. It's important that we keep all our, not only our local businesses, but everybody that we deal with, that they know that we are in a fair, transparent process. And for us to, you know, slide over and say, well, you know, did you see this or did, you know, we don't, we don't have the time for that. It wouldn't be fair if we did it for one business and then we get into a situation where we have, you know, electrical business, we have plumbing business, and we, we have to try and find the time to make every opportunity known to every contractor in town.
Could I suggest that one of the ways that many businesses...
Sorry, could I respond to that?
Sure, absolutely.
To, to all your points?
Yeah.
So, yes, you're all defending the bureaucracy of this very well. My point is, forget Soyuz signs, this is taxpayers' money. We, we can and will offer a better price. The, the system, you're quite right. Yeah, you did go through the, the, the right things bureaucratically. I haven't said that you didn't. My point is, we were having a communication and we're clearly told on the email that we'll be informed as things move along. We weren't.
I don't believe that the information that you got that you'd be informed was if we were going to do some upgrades to the existing signs. I believe that's what it was. This was a totally new project that we were putting up requests for proposals for.
So it would have been impossible for somebody to arrive and say, look, we know that, that you, that you proactively talked about this to us last year, but we're looking at going in a, a different direction. There will be a, a tender coming out, you know, really.
That was done correctly, that tender.
Yeah, the tender was done directly, but nobody responded to us.
No. Counsel, uh...
Again, I go back, I go back to the email that was sent and your comment was, you were busy, you were doing this, you were doing that. Again, everybody is busy. The fair, transparent process that was followed in the purchasing policy twice. In fact, our policy says that we only have to advertise once and we advertise twice in the local paper. And, you know...
And so now we can take taxpayers' money and pay it out to companies outside of this jurisdiction that do not employ local people and do not pay local taxes. That, that in the end, that in the end is the result of this. And you can see from the pricing that, that was given on that invoice, if you, if you went through that, that process, would we be cheaper than, than the other companies?
Had you submitted a bid, we would have that opportunity and a fair, transparent process. We also have to be fair to the people in our, in our total scope of purchasing. If we started going back as a community and say, oh gee, we forgot to include this particular bid, we have to do this thing over again, we wouldn't get any bids.
Yeah. So, can I, Counselor Rhodes would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor McCorduff. Mr. Bromwich, I've sat in this chair for quite a number of years and we've viewed dozens of tender results and quite often we get local businesses that bid on contracts and jobs in our community that are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's always been very, very frustrating to me personally that I cannot persuade or debate or offer those things to local businesses because I often see the impact of those businesses that employ people in our community and all of the things that you mentioned. Regrettably, in local politics and municipal politics in our province and all across Canada and Northern... and North American, perhaps around the world, there have been a lot of shenanigans that have gone on with being able to pick and choose who you want to do the work. In my memory, no shenanigans in our community, and we do that because, uh, it's the right thing to do in our community. When you have an opportunity to say, here's the job, because you're local, uh, that rarely ever works out well in the long run, because it allows people to circumvent the legislation that we all have to live by. We may not like it, but we still have to abide by it. And, you know, it creates frustration, it creates, uh, uh, animosity, it brings forward lots of contentious, contentious issues, but we can't do that. We can't do what you're asking, it's just not a possibility, and it's not something that I would ever entertain. But you have a sympathetic and an empathetic ear sitting here, because we have done this dozens of times, where you think, you know, there's a couple of thousand dollars difference in, uh, the monetary value of a tender that you're gonna award to somebody, you can see the economic benefit, but there is a higher power that legislates what we do, and that bureaucratic process that you, um, uh, talked about is not really a bureaucratic process, it's actually the law of our community and the law of our-
And Mr. Rhodes, if I can just respond to that, at the very end of the email, I clearly agree with that. My point at the beginning of this was to say, if there were three, four sign companies in town, it is not breaking the law to inform those companies that there is a tender process that they may wish to take part in. That is my point. It is not that we get, um, in, in some way, some bias, so that we end up in a situation where ten companies from the lower mainland bid at twenty thousand, and Asouis Signs bids at a hundred thousand, and we get that. That is not what I'm saying. My point is, it would be, I feel it's reasonable in an open and aboveboard way to inform us that there is a, a tender process. We did not see it. Can I tell you why we didn't see it? We lost one significant member of staff. Everybody around this table knows that there are structural issues for getting skilled, employed people in this town. We cannot afford to have somebody sitting around looking for tender opportunities. That is the reality of doing business in Asouis, so-
Excuse me, Mr. Bromage, but this was put twice in the Asouis Times. The other companies that bid on this probably would not have a copy of the Asouis Times in their office. So they went looking for it. Now, we do understand that you didn't, but I, I really don't think we can do anything more, but we do appreciate you-
And I appreciate you giving me the time.
-coming and talking to us about this. And this is on, on Granicus, so that other people will hear your concerns as well, and perhaps people will be really careful about looking at these types of projects. And please, the next time we have something like this, we hope that you will look at it and bid on it, because we would have been happy to have had your company do this if it was, um, if, if we had that option to look at.
And we would have been happy to have bid on it.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more thing on our agenda, and that was an oral report from, um, Counselor Campbell and Counselor Rhodes, who met with, um, accessibility, um, Mike Stiles last week. So, sorry if I missed something. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Van Veenen, we better, we better do, um, go ahead, and I should have put you first. I would, sorry, committee appointments, go ahead.
Thank you.
Apologize.
That's okay. Each year, a mayor and council appoints representatives to special and standing committees. A standing committee of council is established and appointed by the mayor for matters the mayor considers would be better dealt with by committee, and at least half the members of a standing committee must be council members. A select committee of council is established and appointed by council to consider or inquire into any matter and to report its finding and opinion to council. At least one member of a select committee must be a council member. Attached is a list of appointments for two thousand sixteen, seventeen. Staff is looking for direction as to continuation of the committees and appointments thereto. Those requiring resolution for appointment will be forwarded to the December fourth regular open meeting through a staff report. There are no options being provided at this time. Staff is looking for direction as to continuation of committees and the appointments.
Thank you very much. Is there, so we do have the, um, the, the, uh, the sheet here that goes with it. Is there anybody who would like to, um, comment on any of the, of the committees? Counselor Campbell.
I, I've, I've reviewed, um, the document here, and looking at, uh, moving into our, our fourth year on council, I think, uh, having some continuity is, is probably pretty important, and I'm, I'm content with-
With what's there?
Yeah, as it is.
Thank you. Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor McCorduff. I wanted to, um, pick one of the committees out, and that's the Waterfront Steering Committee.
Mm-huh.
And, um, I've been, uh, the chair of that committee for about eight years now, and we've gone through, uh, many, many significant, uh, projects in our community, and I'm just wondering if, uh, uh, some discussion would be welcomed by council for looking, uh, you know, looking at a change. Uh, this is not me withdrawing as chair, but just offering an opportunity to discuss it. Sometimes when, uh, when you're involved in these committees, and I would also like to mention that this is a fairly big budget, uh, committee that requires, you know, a lot of input from, and sometimes, change is not always bad, sometimes it can be good, and I'm wondering if there is anybody else that would be interested in it. And I know I'm repeating myself, this is not me withdrawing, it's just, uh, trying to open it up for some discussion.
Okay. Is there anybody else, anybody who wants to discuss this with Counselor Rhodes?
I, I guess I-
I was gonna say, too bad you're in.
I haven't, I haven't argued with Counselor Rhodes in quite some time, but I think, um, in, uh, I think, I hear what you're saying, and it might be time, um, for different perspective, maybe a distant, different person with the amount of time you've put into it. But again, I'll go back to the, the thought of, uh, the final year of a four-year term, uh, with potentially a new council or different councillors coming in, uh, might make sense in the final year to, to keep your post.
And you do have a, a vice chairperson on that, which helps.
Yeah, I should probably mention, just to maybe try to stimulate a little bit more conversation, it is an intensely interesting committee, you know, where we discuss lots of things that are really great in our community and, and how we, you know, move forward with it and that kind of thing, but-
I don't think you've got any takers.
They come with a free set of steak knives, too?
Yeah. Mr. Remanko, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I, I, if I could just jump in, uh, in, in support of Counselor Campbell's comments about continuity, I think at this particular point in time, uh, continuity is key here, Counselor Rhodes, because you are, uh, a key member with a lot of corporate memory that would probably have to be, uh, revisited by any new member to the community, and, uh, certainly, uh, very supportive of having-
So you're saying that I'm old, right?
No, just corporate memory. What I'm saying is you can remember.
Counselor Rhodes, are you okay to leave it like this? Now, we all have faith in you. Thank you. Okay. So, did you need us to, no. This is just for information, and it'll come back on the fourth.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Um, and so now we'll go to our last item. Sorry about this, where we thought this meeting was gonna be over an hour ago, didn't we? But, um, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Rhodes, would you like to, uh, give us a verbal report, please?
And I'll, and I'll be brief. Uh, a couple of weeks back, there was an article in the Asouis Times, uh, that was initiated by one of our residents, Mike Stiles, um, which elicited a lot of, uh, attention and comments through social media, um, that I found quite interesting. So, uh, Counselor Rhodes and I reached out to, um, Mike Stiles for a meeting, um, really just to listen more than anything else, uh, as to what the concerns are. And when you're listening to several symptoms to an important issue, you always sort of wanna go to the root cause of it, and it, it seems to me, and, and some of this is just, uh, change in code and progression, but, um, we're very reactive when it comes to dealing with accessibility issues, accessibility planning, and that, that's sort of coupled with the idea that new businesses, um, whether they be hotels, restaurants, or retail businesses, um, there is, there is code that has to be met as far as accessibility goes, and, and generally, companies do the minimum. Um, having spent some time in the past and more recently with, with Mike Stiles, there's certain things, and so I'm gonna back, what caught my attention was the suggestion that mayor and council, uh, spend a day in wheelchairs at accessibility days. And why that caught my attention is, past conversations with Mike, you know, when we look at code and we look at width of, of doorways into, into washrooms and, and handles and bars and other safety measures, there's a lot of things that we take for granted and, and don't look at in, in general progression of things. And an example would be, if you look at a bed mattress from nineteen ninety, it's, it's six inches. If you look at a bed mattress in a hotel nowadays, it's about eighteen inches, and double pillow top and six million coils and, and all sorts of things. These are things that don't become, uh, part of a code or any type of change. And having listened to all that and, and spending some time with Mike recently, it seemed to make sense to, to Counselor Rhodes and myself, that, um, it, it would make sense to put together a, a committee of sorts, uh, with representation, um, from a seniors community, from, uh, people within our community with, with accessibility challenges, and a member of council, for a couple of reasons. To look at some of the challenges that we're, we're hearing about right now, but more than that is to change reactive to proactive and look at when we're renovating, uh, uh, public buildings, when we are looking at building permits, when new hotels are opening or renovating, that there's access to a committee like this, where these conversations can happen. Um, and, and the overall goal to have our community even more accessible and, and to do it in a proactive and meaningful way moving forward. So it would sort of have two purposes to me, is one, to, as we do put funding toward accessibility in our budget annually, is to have that, that input within the community of, of how to spend that money and prioritize, um, those types of projects, but at the same time, uh, be a resource for new projects and renovations and plans moving forward, and how we can make sure that we are, you know, ahead of the curve when it comes to accessibility.
Good. Thank you very much. I do know that we have put definitely some money into our budget each year for accessibility issues, and there were several things that, um, that Mike Stiles has pointed out to us over the years, and those have been, several of them have been dealt with. Um, I believe that, um, Mike is on the, it used to be called the Rec Commission, and it's not called-
Community Services.
Yeah, Community Services.
Yes.
Commission. I'm wondering if that has been helpful, and is that a committee that we could use to deal with this, or do we need to look at this and, uh, come up with a separate committee? Mr. Remanko.
The, the two thousand eighteen budget includes, uh, a part of the business plan, includes, uh, getting a contractor through a grant program. The age, there's a provincial age-friendly grant program. Uh, to, to get into the age-friendly designation, they, they're now offering, uh, grant programs to hire a consultant, uh, that'll assist in the planning process, and tying age-friendliness together and-
Absolutely.
-accessibility is, is often what happens in, in this particular assessment. So my sense is that, uh, we, we need to go through that planning process. Uh, if, if we are lucky enough to, uh, get a grant to lead that particular process, then certainly, one of the recommendations out of that particular process may be the committee and, and actually assist in setting a terms of reference for that committee. And, uh, uh, and if we're not fortunate enough to get a grant, then again, it's part of the budget process.
Okay. Is that-
And, and Mike has, Mike has been called upon significantly over the years to assist us in our processes, I, and just speaking to some of his issues relative to sidewalks, uh, you know, we're into a downtown revitalization potentially in the next year, that will probably be a significant part of, uh, of, of the discussion.
I think so.
But that's sort of one of the reasons, I think, when we look at the, that, uh, revitalization project, that's where I think a committee like this, um, would be important. And, and the only part I forgot to say was that, um, having been part of the meeting with, with the Minister of Health and listening to reports from the physician group, um, I learned a lot about our community, and, and I knew we have a, I've never heard the term "age-friendly" before, that's, um, we, we have an older, a, older demographic, but there was more than that. The statistics that were given to me were, uh, people close to end of life, people with chronic illnesses, people facing chronic pain, disabilities, and the numbers were way higher than the provincial averages, uh, in British Columbia, which, another reason why I think, um, even if we're the only community doing this, that's reason enough.
Well, there are several communities that have got the age-friendly, um, the designation now, like Karamias is one that just got it recently, so I, I see this coming up later. Definitely could be part of that, I would think. Counselor King and Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Stiles does sit on community service, uh, board and has come up with lots of recommendations to do with, uh, accessibility around town. Uh, staff, Mr. Davis has gone out of his way with the budget he has to try to accommodate him the best he can at this time. I think part of Mr. Stiles' frustration is the time it's taken to go through the process, and as Mr. Remanko said, I believe it's coming up very important now this next year, as we look for funding, especially with the downtown revitalization, 'cause a lot of the most comments now is the sidewalks and the curbs that-
Absolutely.
-have cracks and things in them, so.
Thank you. Counselor Rhodes, did you have something to add?
Um, no, I'll just, uh-
No. Okay.
I think Counselor King covered everything I was gonna comment on.
Counselor Hamburg?
I'll just make one comment. Um, I've been involved, um, building ramps for local businesses so that the wheelchairs can get in our doors. So we share our ramp with, um, two or three businesses within our block, because of course we've got the ambulance attendees that have had to come to the building a couple of times, and they made the recommendation.
Okay.
So, just as a help for an interim process that some business owners may wanna look at, just to build a small wooden ramp, and it just sits by the door-
Sure.
-and people can just put it there as they wish to access the building.
Just one more comment relative to the, uh, the composition of the, uh, the downtown revitalization committee that has been struck. Uh, perhaps that's something that we can bring back and, and change the terms of reference and, and bring somebody on, uh, that would be representative of the, uh, the accessibility group.
Good. Yep. Because it's kind of, uh, been delayed now, because, uh, we had it all set up, and then, um, Mr. Cunningham's death has caused it to sort of go on a back burner for a while, so maybe we need to look at moving that forward a little more quickly. Yes.
Uh, sorry, Mayor McCorduff, I didn't mean to delay this any longer.
We're an hour late, you know?
Yeah, I know. Won't be the first time. Our advisory design panel was established quite a number of years ago to help us, uh, make sure that we have, uh, the proper kind of, uh, building designs in our community and that kind of thing. One of the comparisons that we talked to Mr. Stiles about was something similar, uh, that would focus on accessibility in our community. And, you know, there, there's always a bigger picture that sometimes we often miss, and these kind of difficulties in our community are not a necessi, they're definitely about people that are in wheelchairs, but that is a very, very small percentage of the people that have accessibility, uh, issues in our community and that kind of thing. You have age people with walkers and all those other kinds of things that, and it was more of a preventative thing, not, not, you know, trying to be proactive about the future, and that's why we had talked in depth about it. We made a lot of comparisons, uh, with the advisory design panel and how that type of thing can work in our community with, with accessibility matters. And, you know, uh, minimum requirements, yes, we meet them all, we're investing a lot of money in our community, uh, trying to make light switches, you know, lower to the ground and doors wider and ramps going up. But really, there is a bigger picture, that we start with preventing those kind of things from happening in our community in the future, and that's why we had talked about, uh, you know, a formal committee that would, uh, have involvement from, with people, uh, with accessibility issues and council members and that type of thing. Something very, very similar to the advisory design panel that we have.
So, are you suggesting, then, that we ask for a staff report on this and perhaps come up with, uh, a suggestion or how we can, uh, deal with this?
Um, I definitely would like to see us move in that direction and look at, uh, the possibility of doing that and some of the pros and cons of either moving forward or, or not doing it.
Or- Or having a look at how we can deal with some of the committees that are already here, and perhaps change the terms of reference and add something on?
No, so I just want to be clear, because there's been a lot of conversations after my opening statement, about our budget process, about committees that exist and things coming up. I just want to be crystal clear as to what I'm suggesting and asking for. For all the reasons that I've mentioned, from the statistics in our community, to upcoming projects, to code not, just provincial code not meeting requirements of the people in our community, I'm suggesting that we get a report on putting a committee together that includes a representative from council, from a destination of ASUAS potentially, regarding tourism and the hotel sector, and members of the public, so that this type of committee can be utilized as a resource for things like the downtown revive project, or any other projects we're looking at that would affect our community in terms of accessibility. That's what I-
So you're making, you're asking for a staff report on this? Would that work? And are you seconding that? Good. That sounds like a good way to start, for sure. Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. So can we adjourn this meeting? Thank you. Counselor King, Counselor Campbell, all in favor? Now, do we need a quick five-minute?